Okay, please settle. We're about to start. The 14th regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. Please rise in vocation by Hon. Christian Rustico Achas, followed by the singing of National Anthem, the Kageyan Dioro March. Mic check, okay. So, let us make a sign of a cross and the Father, the Son, and the Spirit. Amen. Gino, we pray for you this session for today that we will achieve the utmost decision for our people of Kageyan Dioro. We pray for you to our every members of this council to have a good health, to our Vice Mayor, give her wisdom, strength to lead this council, to our people of Kageyan Dioro, to every family, to every household, give them blessings, as well to our Mayor, Clarex Oy, to give us a direction in our city. This we pray: Our Father, who art in heaven, holy be your name; your kingdom come, it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our deliverance, and forgive us our sins, as we forgive those who sinned against us; do not bring us to death, but deliver us from evil. Amen. And the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang maghihinga, kaso sa sila talan, palam ng puso sa nitipoy buhay. Upang pinirang, wera ng mahitig, sa manlulupi, di ka pasisigil. Sa nagatap tutok sa simayat, sa nanihaw pagaw, ay di na tao tulagaw, isa't isa'y pinamahal. Ang isa't isa't awat, wera dun kayanat eh eh. Ang ituhi na paro niya, kayda, pa may libatitig. Luwag na talaw ng walang pagsingka, wera ngit sa Pilipino. Ang iti gaya na pangkay ng hawak, ang palakay ng ganyo sayo. Have a long, dear, long, long life, brother. Have a love, dear, sweet, sweet, loving heart, sweet, sweet, and sincere, like the water, tender, happy. Come and love me, brother, our brother. Have a love, dear, sweet, sweet, we are singing praises in our voice forever, to live to hear. Good night, way to the land of promise, ring and walk on far, they say. His devotion will bless us to serve you forever free. The loving, real nation of my loving world, the mountain hills, I think we both so much love. Here it's wish for you, man, my heart. Have a beautiful grace of God, have a love, dear, sweet, loving heart, dear, my loving heart, apply to your heart, sir. Have a beautiful grace of God, have a love, dear, sweet, you forever, and forever, Lord, I love you, darling.
Please be seated. Good afternoon, everybody. To our guests who are here today, good afternoon. To our media friends, of course, our fellow councilors who are present today, good afternoon. Actually, Mr. Secretary, can you please do the roll call?
Hon. Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer for the First District Councilors: Hon. Agapito Eriberto Giswan, Hon. Roger Jabadai, Hon. JR Pasqual, Hon. Aimy Rose P. Moreno, Hon. Romeo V. Calizo, Hon. George S. Goking, Hon. Jose PPS Abu Junior, Hon. Malvern I. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors: Hon. Ivona Yasini B. Imano, Hon. Maria Lordes Isgaani, Hon. Jolene Mercedes El Balaba, Hon. James K. Judith II, Hon. Ian Mark Nakaya, Hon. Edgar S. Cabanlas, Hon. Christian Rustico M. Achas, Hon. Jose T. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members: Hon. Yan Lam S. Lim, Liga ng Mga Banangay President, Hon. John Michael Elseno, City Escape Federation President. There is coram, Madam Presiding Officer.
Coram is hereby certified. Can we proceed? Ah, no. Before that, we have a birthday celebrant, celebrating today's birthday, yesterday. Yesterday, Councillor Ian Achas singing to be led by Councillor Romeo Calizo. Please rise.
My heartfelt greetings to Councillor Ian Achas. Happy birthday, and I will leave the singing of the birthday song. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Faster. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. How old are you?
Happy birthday. Okay, Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Jocelyn Bebop Rodriguez. And happy birthday, Councillor Christiana Ian Achas. And good afternoon to our colleagues, friends from the media, pello Kageyanon's Mayo Hapon. I move, Madam Presiding Officer, to dispense with the reading of the minutes of meeting on October 3, 2022, and to consider the foraging, which is happy to every member, is the reading itself.
And a second objection. A here now motion is hereby carried.
I likewise move for the approval of the said minutes of meeting.
And a second objection. I hear now motion is hereby carried.
We have five members who would like to render their respective special reports, Madam Presiding Officer, which also the Presiding Officer have consented, and we advise all the reporters to contain their respective reports briefly, to have a one-hour special report. And first, Madam Presiding Officer, is this representation. I would like to render a special report on broadband connectivity in the city of Kageyan Dioro. Second is Councillor Aimy Moreno, who would like to render a report on... Second is Councilor Amy Moreno, who would like to render a report on her intention to institutionalize the Vousey response of the city of Cagayan di Oro. And Councilor Bernie Espasia would like to render a report as regards his proposal on the Cogun Market Traffic Scheme. Then to be followed by Councilor Roger Abadai on his proposal to have a city's waste management system in the city. And Councilor James Judith as regards criminal incidents occurring recently. May I proceed as the first reporter, Madam Presiding Officer?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Just two weeks ago, this representation was sent by the Honorable City Mayor to represent him, and Councilor Bernie was also there, present, to represent the Honorable Vice Mayor in the USAID-sponsored program together with DAICT and the Leagues of Cities as regards improving broadband internet connectivity in cities and LGUs. I recall few of the discussions, Madam Presiding Officer, that Region 10 was placed in the median. In other words, for all the regions who have been graced with this broadband connectivity, Region 10 and Cagayan di Oro as part of Region 10 is at the median, in the middle. In other words, we are still weak with respect to our connection. Much more. Yesterday, for the South District, we were disconnected with the connections of PLDT. I do not know what happened. But the total disconnection, Madam Presiding Officer. I am raising and standing before this august body to render a report to perhaps see the city of Cagayan di Oro in the future competing with the modern cities with a broadband that is so fast, has a caliber of speed of Singapore, or even in Malaysia, or United Kingdom, USA, even in China. We know for a fact, Madam Presiding Officer, that the market is no longer the physical evidence of a standalone building, that you can sell your wares to the public, and of course, your customers, your market are just ready and accessible buying their ware, the wares that you are selling. The market, Madam Chair, is borderless. You can create your own craft and sell it online. And what have you if Russia, China, Japan will be your own market and clients? One triggering discussion that was raised by Engineer L. P. Paras, who was also part of the discussions of one topic, Madam Presiding Officer. He said, which caught the attention of everybody, but for the national government, they snubbed the proposal. I do not know why. But he said, "Why not the government spend for satellites instead of paying for the cost of a 1 billion bridge that can only be utilized by perhaps a thousand of people daily using the bridge as the road towards one end to the other? But if we have this satellite, if we have this connectivity, people from all walks of life, not just a few, hundreds, even not just a few thousands, but people in the global community can access and connect either you or your children an outsourced employee from a modern country, industrial at that, or you are providing employment to the global community." In other words, the benefits that we should, we would be having of this kind of project would tantamount to billions instead of raking just a few millions. And the future generation would have more and greater chances of opportunities that they will receive once we are able to provide them with this broadband connectivity. So this special report I render. I hope that be referred to my committee also, the Innovation Committee, and we will also knock the local finance committee's graces that we support the providers. For instance, we have talked, I personally talked to one of the providers, I would like to name, Globe, Madam Presiding Officer. He said, "If you want to fast-track your connectivity in the city, you invest in cell sites, and we will lower the rates. That's our partnership offer to your city." They have done that in ARM region for security and protection because the LGU can protect the cell sites as the investors. And they would like to do this type of undertaking in the city of Cagayan di Oro. And hopefully, perhaps, in the future time, we can have better connections and for our people, for the young. Makagamit yugayyo paraniyani. So, my prayer, Madam Presiding Officer, is this be considered, maybe perhaps, in the budget feeling, we can inquire. And for the Innovation Committee, we can also engage discussion with the providers together with the Public Utilities Committee, for this to be given light in the city of Cagayan di Oro. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader, Ian Mark Nakaya. It's a very good report. How, what is the mechanism behind? Because you know what, you mentioned about cell sites, no? So our cell site is not enough?
Yes.
So we need more cell sites that the government, local government will invest. Is that what you mean?
Information I gathered, Madam Presiding Officer, for every one cell site, only 300 subscribers can use, can utilize.
So what's the difference? 500? So what's the difference broadband, you mentioned about broadband?
It's the same.
It's the same. But more cell sites to be spent by the government, right?
If the city will invest, they promise to lower the rates.
Lower the rates, more cell sites?
Yes, for the more cell sites. But if they will invest for the cell sites, of course, the rate is regular and normal.
Yes.
According to the rates of today.
You know how much one cell site costs? No?
No, no.
That will be presented during the, no?
Meeting.
The meeting, okay. I would like to recognize Ms. Eileen, Irene, Eileen, Irene, Amy. Ms. Amy Moreno, please, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, mayong hapon sa tanan. Actually, Madam Chair, as I recall, because SMART and PLDT had visited the mayor a few weeks ago, I think three weeks ago, and they had pledged to create more than three dozens of cell sites. But of course, with the partnership with Globe, it can definitely, I'm sure it can definitely help our constituents, na malower down ang cost. Pero FYI lang, Madam Chair, na magmutabang ang SMART karoon for additional, nagpledge na sila additional towers. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to ask another question, Councilor, Major, Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya. Okay, we will be entertaining not only Globe, right, Major? We will be entertaining not only Globe, right?
That's our endearment.
SMART and PLDT. So we'll be entertaining not only Globe but SMART and PLDT as well?
Everyone, everyone in the district.
So anybody can put cell sites depending on the government, the city government, right?
In fact, Madam Presiding Officer, these providers are already interconnected. In other words, let SMART invest more in the area, anyway they can connect with their interconnection ability and capacity, considering that Congress has already intervened that they should be interconnected.
Because this is a very lovable, no? Because you know what happened during Zoom, no? During Zoom, pag hinay ang internet, ang disujiante wala giyon. So I have to get two, two line, no? Like two server para lang makasulod. Pag hinay ang uso, masulod ang uso. So it has been an ongoing problem since the pandemic, kay ang Zoom ang gamit on. So that will be a very good, no? Very good project, hopefully. Okay, yes, Councilor Bernie Espasia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to add, Madam Chair, since I was the one representing the Vice Mayor, ako lang i-add, Madam Chair, that there was night time dito, sa hapon, ipangutahan na ang atong mga providers, kung unsa po'y challenge, ilang challenges in putting some cellular sites. Ako lang i-kontra, ako lang i-kontra kay naka-nots mangwando. Ang usa silang mga problema daw, kay naiuban po'ng mga homeowners association. Like for example, if the site is near on a certain community or subdivision. Some of the HOA or homeowners association, dili gusto magpatokodog tower. This is as a whole, sa entire Philippines, I don't know lang if this is happening in Cagayan di Oro. But as a whole, sa Philippines, kay tungo daw sa health issues, so na daw uban HOA nga, dili mo-agree ano. And ikadawa da'yon, ingon sila, nga napoy ubang mga barangay officials. Again, this is not Cagayan di Oro, as a whole, ni sa ibok Pilipinas, na 'yung mga barangay officials, nga medyo ginahasol-hasol sila, pagkuha sa mga papeles, uguban pa, monang dugay sila makatukod 'yung mga cell sites, which is mogini ang uso sa mga priority karoon nga gusto ni BBM sa atong presidente, na mapaspas gaya ng internet sa Pilipinas.
Thank you, Councilor Bernie Espasia. Actually, kanaggingon nila, ghasol-hasol, no more barangay now. I think the approval is directly, no? There is a city, no? Committing on environment. I was once a kapitan, hinoon, kapangutan ako, because our residents would like to ask whether this, ano, this cell site is safe for everybody. So I also started to question that. Pero later on, as it goes along, 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 it is not really that harmful. Kay kapila na nagpresent ang DOH sa mga cell sites, nga asa gitukod, dili gud siya. So hopefully, nga karoon nga with this new, what you call this, new procedure, no? Wala na nagagi sa barangay, diretso na sa city. So more, more cell sites should be constructed kay para lang sa atong, what you call this, atong internet nga mapaspasan. Any more question or comment? Yes, Councilor Attorney James Judith?
Madam Chair, Majority Floor Leader, atong mga kauban sa konseyo maupay. Ang ako lang pangutana kay, isn't it that kung mag-invest man, momento sa special report, the Majority Floor Leader, ang mag-invest ang usa ka local government unito, ang atong gobyerno sa maubale nga investment lugar butanato. Di ba, dili ba ka nga, akong pangutana is, isn't it kay proprietary capacity naman ang atong game on? In what way man ang atong dakba yan, mo kita kung, dili naman ni sovereign or governmental capacity? So kung mo-investa, in what way will the LGU earn kay proprietary capacity naman siya nga indebu?
Okay, Councilor Ian Mark.
Depending on how we look at this, Madam Presiding Officer, if it is an investment for purposes of serving the public, our returns would be, our community would have access to internet broadband, and they would have access to the entire opportunities within the platform of the internet. If we look at it as an entrepreneurial, proprietary activity or exercise of the city government, that would be up to our engagement with the proponents of the project or the providers. So we cannot speak yet as to which direction we would take, for as long as it would be favorable to the public. That's one we should foremost consider.
Okay, thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya. Our next speaker. Okay, Councilor Amy Moreno. Irene, maginong ako. Amy Moreno is your recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So once again, mayong hapon, Honorable Vice Mayor Jocelyn Bebat Rodriguez, Majority Floor Leader, mayong hapon, and sa akong mga kauban, mayong hapon. So, ang ako ang special report will be tackling on violence against women and children. So in 2004, a milestone law, the Republic Act 9262, was passed in Congress protecting women and children. Under the said law, otherwise known as the Anti-Violence Against Women and Their Children Act of 2004, Vousey, the concept of violence against women and children includes not just physical violence, but also sexual violence, psychological violence, and economic abuse, including threats of such acts, battery, assault, coercion, harassment, or arbitrary deprivation of liberty. The law penalizes any act or a series of acts committed by any person against a woman who is his wife, former wife, or against a woman with whom the person has had a sexual or dating relationship, or with whom he has a common child, or against her child, whether legitimate or illegitimate, within or without the family abode. It has been 18 years since the enactment of the Vousey, and we have come so far from how we were before. Generally speaking, our women are already informed of this law and have been seeking help from our barangay Vousey coordinators or desk officers. Over the years, that the number of cases on Vousey have been at a minimal and on a decreasing trajectory. This deserves a recognition of the efforts of our Vousey desk officers. Data from our CSWD shows that in 2020, only 21 Vousey cases were recorded that happened in Barangay Tablon, Barangay Bayabas, Barangay Puntod, Barangay Makabalang, Barangay Patag, Barangay Bugo, Barangay Carmen, Barangay Kamamanan, Barangay Kanituan, Barangay Pagatpat, Barangay Tres, and Barangay Lumbia. In 2021, prevalence decreased to 14 Vousey cases in Barangay Kaoswagan, Kanituan, Puntod, Mamboaya, Balulang, Tablon, Pagatpat, Lumbia, Ipunan, Puerto, and Balulang. Again, this decreasing trajectory reflects on how barangays in our city government are working hard to minimize, if not eliminate, cases involving act or a series of acts committed by any person against a woman who is his wife, former wife, or against a woman with whom the person has had a sexual or dating relationship. We need to sustain this. More specifically, I would like the council to recognize the efforts of barangay Vousey desk officers in every barangay in Cagayan di Oro. They are the ones who tirelessly work to conduct initial interviews and secure the victims while appropriate actions are being readied by the desk in the police stations. They are the ones who arrange a safe shelter or assist the victim to the CSWD office and assist the victim in filing a temporary protection order or a permanent protection order with the nearest family court. And while we recognize their heroic deeds on a daily basis, I would also bring into this council their plight in the delivery of their functions. We have consulted and interviewed some barangay captains and Vousey personnel. Without divulging their names, the Vousey in charge in a barangay in District 1 said she has worked as Vousey in, sorry, she has worked as Vousey in charge for one year already, attending to cases of violence and abuse, but she only receives 5,400 pesos per month honorarium. Another Vousey personnel from whom barangay who started working Another VOSI personnel from whom barangay who started working in April this year said she still does not know how much she will be paid because she has yet to receive an honorarium. While still, another VOSI officer for 13 years already said, said she gets to receive 500 to 1,500 pesos every quarter as honorarium in their barangay. But the fight is far from over. There are still a significant number of women who are suffering in silence, but due to lack of resources and capacity, our barangay personnel cannot as of this moment reach them yet. We need to sustain the gains of our frontliners and improve further, and so we need to give them all the support we can give. The different pay that receive sprouts from the present setup, which is that each barangay provides honorarium depending on the era and that the city through the CSWD provides each VOSI desk officer 1,500 pesos honorarium per month, but released quarterly. There is no local ordinance yet that institutionalizes this initiative from the city. This brings me to the point that it is high time that we give due to these heroes working as frontliners to protect women and children every day, starting by putting into law their well-deserved honorarium, one that shows how we appreciate their work and how it can empower them to work better. There is already a national law, but it needs to be supplemented with a local law to reinforce its enactment. Actually, just last week, I came from a workshop and I had the privilege to see the facilities of Quezon City regarding their protection, their program on protection for women. And makita na to ang deparensya na grabe ka, dakko ang ilahang budget. They have a whole, entire huge building dedicated for women. And currently, they have about 120 women inside their facility, some of whom naapod ang ilang mga bata. So these are cases of abuse. Now fortunately, dinis sa Cagayan, gamay rakaayong atuang VOSI cases. As I speak, we have one case na naakaroon sa Women's Crisis Center. So it may be due to lack of resources. It may be due to fear among women. So I believe we should create, no, more awareness so that women can easily come forward to our VOSI desk officers. And when it comes to children, fortunately for Quezon City, they have a very low number of abuse cases on children. But here in Cagayan de Oro, medyo, medyo taas ang atuang cases. So with this, no? And I'm sure, no, if we have not yet visited the home care for girls, I suggest we do so. Kay every time makaadto ko dito, marrealize na ko ang important sa mga VOSI desk officers. Kay if not for the VOSI desk officers, basin, you know, mas muhatluck ang mga bata o ang mga babae. So in ending, I would like to move to request for a resolution to revisit the city VOSI program, particularly on the specific support we extend to our VOSI desk officers in every barangay in aid of legislation. We hope that we can institutionalize this so as to give our barangay frontliners an assurance of their importance to our community. Thank you, and mayong hapon ka na tong tanan.
Thank you very much, Counselor Moreno. Uh, that is a very good report now with VOSI cases in Cagayan de Oro. Uh, with regard to, uh, this is my only, uh, point of view. With regard to the honorarium, it depends on the barangay. It depends on the barangay how much they are earning, how much is their era. So it depends on them. Uh, with VOSI cases, it is really, really, we need to strengthen our barangay. We need to empower, the kapitan needs to be empowered so that these VOSI cases will be implemented. Once we know that there is a VOSI case in such barangay, then this is where the kapitan comes in, sign a restraining order, deliver to the, uh, the person concerned, and 14 days, the husband has to go down, look for a place, and will not be able to stay with the family. Maugin na kakahi tabo perme bisas akong barangay. I have, I am very strict with that. Pero what happens is that the forgiving wife always forgives the husband. So balik nasad, humana na. Monang, uh, magbalik-balik ang cases of VOSI. Later on, siguro makarealize ang wife, monang negosyans relation. Pero most of the time, the wife goes back to the husband, in spite na pakanaugon. Even with one report of a wife, ngaiiyag ikosilang siya pakanaugon, pwede pakanaug. So let us empower our barangays, empower the kapitan na this VOSI be implemented strictly in the barangays. Ah, naman si Counselor Alam Lim. So that, uh, ato nasang i-refresh ang mandate, ah, i-refresh sa balik na kini ngabalaod, na ma-strengthen sa kada barangay. Yes, Counselor Amy Moreno, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, tinuod, Madam Chair, no? But it makes us realize more importance of VOSI desk officers kay fickle-minded ang babae.
Yes.
Mahaglang, di ba, okay na? All is forgotten. Women are really naturally very forgiving.
Yeah. True, true.
Hand reactions, you know? But all the more, the reason na, kinanglan na to ang mga VOSI desk officers kay sila man ang mag, you know, magpassify sa mga babae and kinanglan sa babae na naasay kaistorya para makarely. And soon enough, son, bohong, no? Marrealize niya kung unsay mas maayaw na desisyon na dapat.
Yeah.
And, and sa, and sa karoon, currently, naanay gehatag ang city na honorarium, which was actually posted by Busturks, no? Naghatag na ang city na 1,500 per barangay.
Ah, okay, good one.
But my concern is, it really depends sa era sa barangay. So na ay mga barangay na ang madawat nila 5,000, pero napod may mga barangay na gamay rakaayong. So basin, ang madawat lang nila is the honorarium given by the city. So maotong, at least madugangan lang siguro gamay and ma-institutionalize lang ang ilahang honorarium. So, kana lang, thank you.
1,500. Okay, thank you, Counselor Amy Moreno. Anyway, anyway, and one more thing. Anna, that's Counselor, oh, Counselor Alam Lim. Counselor Alam Lim, probably when you gather around naning mga kapitanes na to, no? Let us give them additional information, oh, how to handle VOSI. Kay kadaghanas sa atong mga kababayan ang kakadlok. They do not know where to go. They do not know what is their rights. They do not know whether they are protected. So strengthen na to ang ilang katungod sa mga kababainhan and how they will be able, how we will be able to protect them as well. So I hope that this can be discussed on the level ni Counselor Alam Lim. Is that okay? Thank you, Counselor Alam Lim. So thank you very much. Our next reporter, Counselor Bernie Sparsia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kami ni General Caliso mo-support, give me mom sa mga kababainan, mom.
Okay, mga brisong.
Apil si kuya George Go-King. Kuya, ato gina, patiktan gina to ang mga kababainan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, huh? He's asking whether it's an abuse husband. That is true. That is true, very true, abuse husband. Pero there's no balaoed. What you can do is with abuse husband is only physical injury. It happened to me in my barangay, kulatado ang bana. Pero wag ikumapangitaan na kaso, protection against husband, no? Physical injury, naggyod, bisag nagblack eye na. Mauna siya, proceed, Counselor Bernie.
Alutuan lamig-laming a breakfast, mom, okay namang, Amy mom? Anyway, thank you, Madam Chair. Ang akong special report, may tungod kini sa nagkabibo na night market sa Kugon. Niaging Sabado, October 8, mga las 9 sa gabii, ako mismo, together with my family, my kids, naatugyo ko sa ukay-ukayan sa Kugon Market. Bibo kayo, daghan balighya, ogang barato poon, og daghan kay mamalitay. And I'm so happy nga nakita na ko, daghan kay customers. Borabi tag, after pandemic, after two years, borag nalipay ta nga makakita nga sa wakas, medyo nahinahina, nagbalik ang atong ekonomiya. Sila nga mga gagming negosyante, nakapa, nakabalighya na. Like I said, ako akong kalipay, na nabalik sila silang pagnegosyo. Apan, atong gabi una, na-witness poon ako, og akong pamilya, ang usak SUV, na nakabanga og motor. Tungod siguro sa kakadlok sa nakabanga og motor, kay moragya, brihan, manihang portahan, kung borag adlok siya nga, basiunya, kulatahon siya sa mga tao, wala siya muhonong, og iyang gibuldos, og nihaguros kimi. Opipilasab ang medyo na side side, magaling, nagsiningita 'yung mga tao, kay kumpaminaw ni mo mora siya, og nagstrapping, abig, armalite, pero tingog lang dito sa motor. And, uh, may na lang, wala'y kaswalti. Pero imagine ninyo, gikan sa may Antonio ti, ang motor, nadalagyan na buldos, padulong dito sa nasaret, dool sa inyong balay, Madam Chair. Iga nakalayo ang gibehan sa maong kuwan motor. So medyo, naibawa na to, in fairness to Colonel Mandia, na ni-reply mo po siya sa kuwan nga, Chinese national to siya, medyo hubog daw, so medyo naadlok, na dito na siya na dakpan sa nasaret. But, well, that's, kana na issue, ang focus akong special report is dito ko balik sa night market. Uh, ang akong naobserbahan, manggud, ang mga kadalanan, syempre wala gisira. So bisag na ay na malighya, abriga poon ang dalan. So mga sakyanan, kotse, mga motor, medyo okay kay gamay man. Pero grabe, bisag SUV, like atong nakaligis, og ibyan galing, bisag elf, makaaghi. Misugok gayod sa piot na dalan, og nakigpatintiro gayod sa mga mamalitay. Atong klarohon, suportado na ko ang night market sa Kugon. Uh, galing sa akong sakalibo na budget, medyo dagan-dagan sa da kunapalit. Dakong tabang mi, labi na karoon, labi na karoon gayod nga pitos, og lisod kayo ang panahon. Apan kanilang tana ang akong gusto. Una, pwede ba na to i-review ang traffic scheme sa Kugon Market? Labi na sa panahon nga na ang night market. Nakabisita manggud ko, ako fan manggud ko matong, mga ukay-ukayan, nakabisita ko mga night markets sa Cebu, sa Davao. Ilagin na gina-plastar ang kapamalighya, og nagyo street sport nga. Kani, wala giyod ang mamalighya ni, kay dirigyod ang one-way traffic, ano ba? Medyo mas plaster. Tapos, kung pwede, magdesignet po't ta og parking areas. Because kung na ay parking areas na plaster, makaatrac na og more buyers, na possible buyer, sa atong mga vendors nga nadia sa mga ukay-ukayan. Ikaduwa, iklaro gina to, kung unsagid sila oras magsugo do plastar. Kay medyo usahay na uban medyo sa Europe o gayo, 4:00 PM, 5:00 PM, nana. So that's why medyo rush hour, pamaguna siya, so medyo, medyo piot na, no? Uh, atong plastaron, kung unsagid ang saktong oras nga tana magsugo na sila plastar. And number three, additional police visibility for additional safety sa area. Kay kung medyo makita gitaw ngay police, medyo safe ang atong feeling. Like myself, I'm with my family and my kids, mas lamig magitong uban ng pamilya nga feeling nila safe sila nga moat to sa night market. Again, suportado na ko ang night market. Kabulok po ko nga, maupun ni ang gusto ni Mayor Clarix, oy, kaganina galing siyang speech. Gusto ko lang na safe ang atong mamalighya ay patipod ang mga mamalitay. Again, my prayer, Madam Chair, to the committee chair, I don't know, with committee chair, Counselor General Romeo Caliso of Committee of Public Utilities, say mo ba ni, and also maybe on a committee on ways and means to conduct a committee hearing regarding on this matter. Madam Chair, ako lang klarohon, suportahan ako ni, and maybe, hopefully, magaroon ng committee hearing para lang to review lang again, the traffic scheme, ang layout, para mas plaster og mas safe ang atong mga mamalighya ay og mamalitay. That's it, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Bernie Sparsia. So let us refer to the committee, Economic Enterprise and Public Utilities.
This is outside, actually. Ah, I mean, they see, there is no installed the night market yet.
Ah, okay.
Uh, according to the city mayor, as he mentioned during his speech earlier, only the tolerance that he is trying to stretch for, for, for the vendors. There is no installed the night market. So he only authorized the RTA to regulate everything.
So let's, ano, to refer this to you, RTA. Uh, okay, Counselor Romeo Caliso, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Actually, there is already a technical working group working on this. And this, this has gone through a series of adjustments. In fact, even the time that the people from the hinterlands will come down and display their products. Uh, it was just that, then they start at 4 o'clock. Adjusted to 5 o'clock, but then again, traffic is still at its peak at that time. And there's now a study going on. So we can follow what other cities are doing, just like in Cebu, they start at 7:30. And, yeah, I agree with the suggestion of Counselor Bernie that there has to, there has to be a, an area that shall be managed in a manner that no, no vehicles can already go in. The traffic management should be given utmost importance. So meantime, it's RTA that has been set by the Majority Floor Leader. RTA is the one managing for the meantime. But maybe we can infuse other deputies in managing said area so that there'll be activity that will be conducted very orderly and it will be safe for all those going there. Because I myself saw it also going there, kay namanggud diha ang mga presko ng mga vegetables at that time. So I really agree with the proposal of the good reporter.
Thank you, Counselor Romeo Caliso.
Ah, yes, Madam Chair. Ang ilam ang good gulang interpretayon, sa'ko kanaginigun na gulay. Anggut lang sa akong mga kauban. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Caliso. So, uh, okay, so it's still with the technical working group. So they will be, uh, they will be doing, making some guidelines for the, ano, sa night market. So our next speaker is Counselor Roger Abada, you're recognized.
Dagat salamat, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor, Joseline Bebeto Rodriguez, my distinguished colleagues in the Twin Cities City Council, our friends who are watching us virtually and physically, and all friends in the media, naingapon kaninyong tanan. Now, as we recall, that last session, I reported and presented to you one of the cleanest country in the world, Sweden, how they manage their waste, no? So, uh, now, ang ilang problema, daily ang pag-manage, perfect management, but ang problema nila, kay waan na sila'y basura, monang ilan. And is a complete reversal sa Pilipinas. Uglapi na gini sa to, karoon, problema giyod ang basura. As you can see it, if you roam around, there are piles of uncollected garbage og na-collect magaling, pag-abot dito sa atong land, sanitary landfill. Tawala dito kita bakwagin mga pai mosli, dili sama sa gimu sa nasod ngang tokong ginalan in dunyagi siyon, no? Now, today, I am presenting to you, reporting to you, what transpired during my committee meeting. One of the unsolicited proponents of for the cities, Cagayan de Oro City Total Waste Management System and Processing Facility Project. I providing you a... I providing you uh brochures, na sa inyong table, and on the, that is their uh proposal, no? So, uh, one of the agenda in their presentation, of the proponent, they are, they are called their company is Pinoy Basurero Corporation, no? So, this is a public and private, uh, no, public-private partnership project proposal for the innovation of our municipal waste collection services, integrated waste processing disposal. You can see it in the video, video by Padaganpa. By Di Padagana, okay. So that is their uh scope of their proposal. The main uh scope of their, of their services is environmental engineering and management. What is this? The project will undertake to study and re-engineer the existing waste management facility in Kagayan Euro, kana ang atong land, sanitary landfill caro, to ensure environmental rehabilitation and subsequent management. The second one is infrastructure design and development. Uh, the project will decide, will be designed, oh, to develop modern integrated waste management facility that includes material recovery facility, waste conversion facility, biodegradable material processing facility, and waste water treatment facility. Ang naitabukaroon sa atong kuwan, naitsuras sa atong, atong landfill, is a conventional way of management karoon. Hakot, koleksyon, dalon sa landfill, tambak, ibubu dito, tambakan. So, anugon kayo ang basura, nga wakid, tawag, nakadugang lang, problema kataas atong bukid dito. So munay ilang bato, uh munay ilang gepropos, no? An operational management services, the project will employ local stakeholders to operate the entire project facility. Wala na 'yung mga kalay, dito na sila mnerbaho. I hire na sila, gitawag nila na sa ilang kompanya sa Kabiti o Cebu. Gitawag ng MR, uh MR, if, ay, material recovery uh facility attendance, dili na basurero. So munay ilang, kuwan, the project will continuously invest, innovate, improve operation throughout the entire terms of the project. Now, this is a, what is the advantage of this project uh to the city? Is a zero investment cost to the government, why gas to ang Sudat Kagayan Euro? Zero operating cost of the government, then zero development risk to the community. One hundred percent compliance environmental policies. Twenty percent of the total disposal cost, uh cheaper, cheaper, oh. Then job opportunities and employment training, improve cottage industry economics, additional tax revenue to the local uh, to our city, then additional enterprise revenue, and improve investors' private, public sector confidence. Uh, my dear uh colleagues, so. Uh, as you can see it in the brochures, you got that, those are the integrated waste management service offering the processing capacity, like what that I presented, no? Sa atong irrepikitong naitabu sa lain nasod. So munay mamahimo sa atong mga, morning mga uh waste nga atong koleksyon, o tuas sa kuwan, tuas sa atong kuwan karoon, napakaroon dya, ipanglubung, o lagi mapusli. So mone ang ilang uh system of processing, ang kaning mga uh solid plastic, oh, di have to refuse fuel, processing production, water, waste recovery, and treatment, or may mupa-mga fertilizer, and look at that, is an eco tourism park, no? So, mone ang ilang gepropos nga may tabo sa atong uh sanitary landfill dinisa, uh Sudat Kagayan Euro. Aga motobamoga, ang kanang mga lichis karunja, kana mga fluids da karunja sa atong sanitary landfill that could be converted into drinking water or padi-padi panghugas because of this uh technology sa ilang gamitun. Na imo na nila na sa Cebu o sa Kabiti existing, uh existing na nila karoon, no? So, uh, gusto benyan na may tabo dini, ato lang iapply dini sa Kagayan Euro, kaniya klasinga uh waste management technology. Okay, problema raba kita sa basura. So ang atong style karoon sa basura, hakot, tapos ilubung lang dito sa atong uh landfill, wag i, ola, o lagi na puslan, di ba? So, this is the uh proposal, uh, madam chair, and my colleagues. I hope uh you will be able to appreciate, or if you think that you, we will improve the system of our uh sanitary landfill or the garbage waste management, then I think uh, I am proposing that uh, after the proper time, I am proposing a solution to formally endorse this proposal to the office of the city mayor for his uh perusal. So this, that is uh all my special report for today, madam chair and my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor Roger Abadae, any comment? Wala, zero, zero, you mean to say we are not going to spend any centavo for this one? Can you, can you in any way uh present nga, in our vernacular, no? Ngamasabtan na to sa tanan, because if this is the presentation, I don't think wala'tay magasto ni ini. Nagitay magasto ni ini, in layman's term, how simple will that be? Kung ato ginisiyang pagasundun, how simple?
During their presentation, madam chair, the committee, uh, ang ato lang participation dini, katulang, katulang ang area, ilalantong i-reengineer, iladito sila mabutang sa ilang processing plant, dito ang, ang ilang atong uh kuwan, murah na atong contribution.
Yeah, but then, the collection still you have to spend, for the collection.
Sila na magkulik, sila na.
Ilagya pon, tanan, ilan nagitanan, who is this company?
Uh, basuran, Pinoy. Ah, Pinoy Basurero.
From?
Di have in Cebu and in Kabiti. So during the committee meeting, nainguntong sa Clean Row, or Mr. Nagio, and I think uh, uh, Councilor Amy, IB, IB, uh, dililang, katulang dililang curitika lagi pa kita, kung possible, maka pwidi tamaka jumpstart. So they are willing to uh visit us, to visit their company if we think that uh, we really believe their, their presence. None of the members of those invited were not able to appreciate with this presentation. This is the first time in Mindanao, I think, and Mindanao, or I think Tagum, and Tagum. So, uh, and I will place uh in your hand uh this uh proposal, a project uh for our city. So, that's the uh, I presented already the advantages of this uh project as compared on to this, our waste management.
Thank you, Councilor Roger Abadae, yes, Councilor, Ayan Magnakaya, ah. Okay, Councilor Gerly Balaba, you recognize?
Thank you, and may uhopon, madam chair, mga tanan lang ko sa ato ang uh good reporter. Kung naabailain mga kompanya ang interesado po na, mo invest na, ingunan ni, ng klasing na uh uh wastewater, uh waste management facility, kay kung naaman, or aga, kinhangla na to ni siya iagi sa, no, bidding man siguro na? No, dili lang, we have to uh, uh, kinibitong uh encourage other kaning investors para fair ang pag ano.
I hope, I hope that there's somebody also uh will propose also a project like this. We will commit.
Councilor Abadae, what is the end product? I mean, they will be here to do the service, so what do they gain from us?
They will only ask the tipping fee, murah na ilang.
Ah, does the catch?
Nah.
The tipping fee now goes to them, not anymore with the city.
Yeah.
Okay, so does the catch? Uh, anyway, that you have to study on that.
But the tipping fee that will, depende na sa agreement sa uh city, kung later on, if this will be realized.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Councilor Roger Abadae, yes, Councilor Ayan Magnakaya.
Uh, thank you. I am almost always optimistic in all uh, in divorce of the government, especially for the human development and the protection of the environment, uh, madam Presiding Officer. But uh, as a experienced legislator, we have been visited with so many proposals and proponents. Our city secretary is now laughing, Carla is also laughing.
Why are you laughing, Carla?
Allow me to spell out why they are laughing. Puro na proposal, ano man, gamay ra atong waste.
Kulang.
Di sila makaginansya na pagabot sa panahon. Uh, ang akong worry, parehas sa mga authority nga ga paasa sa city council, diya sa Kagayan Euro River, ibaligya nila ang kontrata. We have to check, uh, madam Presiding Officer, for funding purposes. At sa daraba kayo, sa darabagit kayong facility. That is why uh, we only relied on the minimum requirement of the INR, of RA nine zero zero three, which is, we, we laid down the uh, what do you call that screen? Uh, in the uh, uh, kanang atong kuwan. Di naman addamsite, kay kuwan naman na siya, environmentally friendly daw na nga facility. So, inani lang, before we act on this matter, madam Presiding Officer, I support the aggressiveness of Councilor Roger Abadae. Ang ako lang is dili mabaligya ang atong aksyon. Uh, I, I do not know the, the company. That is why I am already, I'm making a mark of question. Kay naitabog, naitabuk na nakadaghan. You asked our city secretary, you asked Carla. Uh, daghan na nga pangitabuk dini nga, kakagamit ang konsyo. As the elder member of the council, I should report that and inform the new fights. Ngah, warri tagamay, bantay tagamay. Kay kaniwito atong mga resolusyon, uh, magamit ni siya as value money. Uh, munang careful tagamay nga mapagawa sa anak. Kay na ay mga incidents kakaitabuk anak. May gali na ngahimong palpak silang tanan. Pero pagabot nila dini, nakagasto na, katong nakabaligya, o mga unsa maugaling ang mga endorsements. Pag tanaw nila, gamay ra atong basura, dili sila makaginansya, bisag twenty, twenty-five years nga tipping fee, kay gamay ragid pa ang atong basura. So, uh, uyun ko. Then uyunsad ko sa gisultin ni Councilor Gerly, if we are really geared towards this type of undertaking, let's open up. Uh, parehas sa kanang plano nga reclamation, i-open up na to. Dili tamo limit sa kung kinsay nagpropose lang sa ato. Uh, careful tagamay, uh, sa kanil lugar nga mga pamagi, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ayan Magda, no, I'll call uh Councilor IB Imano first, then uh Councilor Roger Abadae.
Thank you, madam chair, good afternoon to everybody. Uh, Vice Mayor to Majority Floor Leader, Minority Floor Leader, to everyone in this uh session hall, good afternoon to everyone. Ma'am, just to answer the question of uh Majority Floor Leader regarding the amount of garbage, I also raised the same question, because I do know nga there are certain times nga. Uh, there are, these proposals, the proposal was actually very good, even the presentation. I did not even intend to join the uh, the committee meeting of uh Honorable Abadae, but when I went to the office of Boss Torx, I heard their conversation, and I couldn't help but join, so yes, I did join and I did listen. And I also uh asked the same question nga, whether there is a minimum for the amount of garbage to be collected? Because for sure, the garbage of Kagayan Euro will not be enough to make this um plant running for a longer, for a long period of time. And uh their speaker, Mr. Sherwin, if I am not wrong, uh also told me that they will accustom their plant to the amount of garbage that we can um, that we can get within our city. And if na ay magsulod nga other uh waste from other kinda neighboring municipalities or city, we can also uh use it as well. But uh with regards also to their, how they can make income of it, they also have a certain number of byproducts, uh, madam chair, which I think is one of the reasons nga they are encouraging, or they are, they are for the PPP or the private-public partnership. Is because one of their byproducts is kaning marag, marag coal na gets, which they sell to big factories, kay mas dugay siya mawala ang heat, and mas dugay siya, mas sustainable siya. They also have uh biogas, which they also use for their own facility to lessen their expenses, their operating expenses, just to name a few, uh, madam chair. Although, yes, I do agree also with uh Councilor Gerly, now we should also be open to other companies who have uh alternative or the same um man, uh waste management, especially uh with the water waste management. That, that's all, madam chair, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilor IB Imano, yes, Councilor Roger Abadae.
Actually, to be honest and to be frank, I have no vested interest on this uh proposal project, no? My only intention is to have a total innovations of our waste management program. Kay until now, uh, problema magita, di ba? Atong, you look at the system of uh waste management, is a still conventional. So, kung ato ni pasagdan, do you have any, uh, do you have any uh one uh proposal how to solve our uh problem right now? Di ba? So, why not try, huh? Ang madlok ta, madlok pagani ta nga, along palaga, pake di, unsan nagao, ano. So, gani, they are open to invite us to jumpstart. They are, they are now existing in Cebu, operating in Cebu, the whole mystery Cebu, they are operating and in Kabiti City, they have their uh facilities there, and they are, they welcome us if we will visit there. So that we will know really, what is really the nature of their uh, their uh company. That's what, the advice also of uh the EMB. Don't you know that our landfill now, based during the meeting, the EMB Director uh, uh, has already sent a notice to the management of uh our sanitary landfill now, nana sa Clean Row, to reconstruct new uh lichis pool? Because there's a danger of contamination to our Ipanan River. Ma'to mo dito tanawagani tong lichis pool, kung heberens, there is a tendency that will run to our uh, our Ipanan River. So there is a need to innovate our water, ano, our waste management uh system dinisa Sudat Kagayan Euro. In fact, that is one of the priority uh program of uh the city mayor, the garbage situation in Kagayan Euro. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Roger Abadae, is there a feasibility study already of this project?
It, the, in the proposal, in the proposal, uh, submitted to the mayor, to dito, nagistudyon na nila, wala pa ang Sudat ni istudyon na nila sa ilang company with regards to the situation of our, our uh waste management uh program. Nana ilang study to, attach sa ilang brochures, dili ka na, dili ka na, one piece, muna. Si, pa, kuwan, it's already in the office of the city mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Roger Abadae, yes, Councilor Amy Moreno.
Thank you, madam chair. Actually, the, the suggestion of Councilor Roger Abadae, um, meron, it's too good to be true. Every city's dream to have its own facility, no? And here comes a company to offer the best all-in-one package, and we are not going to spend pisag piso. But however, um, as this may be true, the question here again is the same with uh Majority Floor Leader, no? Um, will, will we suffice, will the production suffice for the company? And second is, of course, this company will be spending billions sa atong Sudat. So, for, are we going to be locked up? Is there going to be a lock-in period? Kay dili naman sila muhawa kung dili sila makagay, no? And with that, if in two years, marrealize na to, na dili, dili, um, we're not satisfied with their service, no? Um, will we be able to break away from this contract? So I, I would like to learn more about. So, I would like to learn more about the proposal. It sounds promising, indeed, it sounds promising because it's an all-in-one package for a city, no? When it comes to waste management. So, kana lang, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Amy Moreno. Okay, so I think it's in the mayor's office, so let the mayor study on that, on this proposal, no? Anyway, our last speaker? Last? Councilor Attorney James Judy.
Sa atong halandong BC Mayor, Joseline Bebop Rodriguez, sa kontinahod ng mga kauban, sa konceho, atong mga bisita, membro sa prensa, atong pinanggang katauhan sa dakbayan sa Kageyan de Oro. Sa inyong tanan, maupay. Crime does not pay. Dapat lang. Kung na ay usa katao or individual, makasala or nakasupak sa atong balao, dapat itaral sa okmanan, arond ditto, ipahamtang ang tukmang silot matut pa sa balao. Atong Octubre 9, sa wala pa migawas ang bidlisyo sa haring adlaw sa sayong Kabuntagon, gitay ug ang atong dakbayan. Gitay ug ang atong dakbayan sa mangilngig na krimen or incidente nga naitabu ditto sa may Taguanaw. Sakop sa barangay in dahag. Nasayod naman siguro kita sa maong pangitabu, kay na viral naman kato. Gani, maunay ang atong panawagan sa atong kapulisan, sa atong mga barangay officials. Kay, dili manunta na siguro mahitabu, kung ato lang ipatuman ang atong ordinanasa. Namantay ordinanasa, ang 5133-95. Kung wala kumasayop, panahon pa'to ang otor ato si Majority Floor Leader, Aya Nakaya. Kung ipatuman lang'to. Kung wala kumasayop, kung si Councilor Aya Nakaya, siguro, yes. O nga, kung ipatuman lang sa atong barangay, namang la sila mga tanon. Ngadili manunta, pwede nga maginom dia sa atong kadalanan, sa atong plaza. Pero, ang naitabu sa akong pagtuok, katung ay nga incidente o pangitabu. Gitistingan'to nila paginom ditto kasas sa Taguanaw Bridge or sa Pilais Bridge, wa may nagsita, mibalik. Wa gapoy nagsita, hantod na suki, nadayon sila, perme nadayan sila ditto. Kay, wala manatong ipatuman ang atong balao. Naapag'yo't, umaabot, kay mas nindot pa or mas tsada pa bali sa Pilais Bridge, ang kining gisugaan ng Makasandig-Balulang Bridge, na nagyapo'y ginom dia, kay gihimo na na nilang bagong turispator imnanan, matut pa nila public bar. Naapod sa Coastal Road, naapod sa Puntod-Kauswagan Bridge. Simple raman siguro ang atong panawagan, inani lang. Kay, dili man na, one time nga, naginom sila ditto ni Ulbon, naitabu na dayon ang maong incidente. Ang ato lang, pagpatuman sa atong balao. Aduna kita'y ordinanasa. Akong panawagan sa atong hepe sa kapulisan, kernela aron mandia. Tumana, kenaaman sila bit patrol system, naanaman sila robing patrol. Kato, kung naabot lang ditto siguro ang atong kapulisan sa pag-robing, ilam ang gitong masita, kung ilatong naabot ditto nga lugar. Pero, kabalo ko, dapat i-comment mga gani sila, naanaman ko'y resolution anak, nga i-comment ang atong kapulisan. Naitabu lang ang maong incidente, kay wala'to naabot sa ilang pag-robing or bit patrol sa atong kapulisan. Kay, hilit naman tong abahin sa atong dakbayan. Unsa man ang akong gusto mahitabu, simple lang. Katung panawagan nga ipatuman sa atong kapulisan, ang ilang bit patrol, ang robing patrol. Dayon, sa atong kabarangayan, nga ipatuman nila ang atong ordinanasa, nga Ordinance Number 5133-95. Dayon, sa ato pong kapulisan, ang ako pong panawagan, kay maglisod man sila dakup, kay wapamamis surrender ang maong responsable sa krimen. Inani lang. Dapat katung uban sa katung at-large bali nga suspect, apilunta sila pasakaan o kaso di ilang katung at-large nga suspect. Kay, sila mantanan nga naadito, dapat kasuhan sa Article 251, death cost in a tumultuous afre. Dili sila mingon nga itumbok lang nila atong tawahan na kay maore nakaligis, apan sila mantanan naadito. Nasayod man ang atong mga consultant sa mga kabugado. Nasayod man si Councilor Apo sa kabugado, si Councilor Cabanlas, o sa magyapon kabugado. Ngakatung incidente, dili pwede nga itulod lang nila atong tawahan na. Silang tanan nga naadito, naginom, mahinungdan sa kagubot o rambol, dapat pasaka agaso sa atong kapulisan, Article 251. Ugun sa padayon, ang ako lang din hangyo, i-refer mga giniato sa Committee on Loss and Rules, kay na timing po si Majority Floor Leader, ang maong otor ni ato, ato na siguro, Councilor Nakaya, ato na sigurong amendahan ang maong, at the public safety, sa public safety. Ato na sigurong amendahan ang maong ordinanasa, patasan na na'to ang multa. Kay, nakita na ko, gamay pa man tong, nga, gamay pa man ang mga multa, panahon pa man to, ang atong BC Mayor, si John Elisaga, tuig 1925. Dapat lang ipakita na'to sa pagpatuman na'to sa atong ordinanasa, that crime does not pay. Na makita, 1995, November 27, 1995. Huh? Oh, ang fotletan na ako, namin ako. Nano, karaan na kayo? Makikita lang ni mo daano? Murag panahon pa siguro na sa WordStar, siguro na, WordStar na, na ang printer gigamit that matrix. Kana, maunay ibidin siya, tikpamatuod nga, karaan na gina. O panahon na sa siguro, Majority Floor Leader nga, usabon na'to ang silot nga naadha. Ang multa, 500, fine of not less than 500 pesos, og naapodan tong, but not more than 1,500 pesos. So, ang inflationary rate, inuuko 87 na katuig ang bilabay, ang ayan na sa siguro na'to usabon. Aron sa pagpatuman na'to, nga tagaagnipon ang maong ordinanasa, o pagpatuman sa atong kapulisan o atong kabarangayan, atong mahan ay, ato na masiguro, ampe in order sa atong dakbayan. Bininalang kukutob, daghang salamat, as the Kageyan de Oro.
O bagu ni tingog, Councilor Kuwan, gaani siya may tingog sa asta. Thank you, Councilor Attorney James Judy. Yes, Councilor Roger Abaday.
Thank you, thank you very much. Lo ege gani mga atong kapulisan, gud kay, sila gat perme madakdakan, pero ilam ang gini trabaho, law enforcement, di ba? So, sila man tik impose balao, tik bantay sa kinabuhay oga property sa at mga katauhan ang community daw. Ang community dia is one of the pillars of our criminal justice system. Mauna nga, naadha tanan, naadha mga barangay officials, diya rosopulis, diya pulis, diya dipulis, naibipat di barangay pulis, kompito di man, lupun. So, we will not only always blame sa atong kapulisan, kay, litis lang, bagong ratio, ang ratios of police to, ah, kuwan, ratio is, sa municipality langa, gamay langa mga syudad, um, recipeo, 51 is to 500, 1 pulis to 500 residents, so, ang ilang bantayan. But in a, in a community like ours, highly organized, 1 is to 1,000, 1 pulis to 1,000. So, di cannot accommodate, they are not omnipresent all the time sa pangitabu. So, they need assistance also, munang na atay mga multiplier. What the police should do is to improve their police community relation. What the barangays also, they have also to utilize their power and authority, being also the chief enforcer sa ilang bantay sa, sa, one. We will not entrust to one agency alone. So, there must be a coordination between the law enforcement, the government, and the community. So, these are the pillars of our criminal justice system. Because one of the members of the pillars nga magbagdaon gani, dili ma cooperate, that will create injustice. Munang naitabu karoon nga, dili magkatiman kay, namay ni bagdaon nga, membro sa atong criminal justice system. And that is the thing that we have to improve or correct, Madam Chair and my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilor Roger Abaday. So, let us empower again the barangay. Councilor Alam Lim, remind the barangay that they have the tanots, sayo pagali ginom na badlungon na, di ba? O di git mahadlo kay nga no, kung imo pasagdan, magbalik-balik na diha og inom, dayon, tada din mahitabu, di ba? Kisa'to napataas kamot. Councilor Romeo Caliso, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. On those bridges, Taguanaw and that bridge linking Makasandig from Balulang, these are actually boundaries. And sometimes, magtulod, magutao ga, kisang barangay ang responsable sa pagmonitor ni ini. But, Madam Chair, you know, security is a shared responsibility. It should not always be directed to the police, not only directed to the barangays. Kana'tang mga boundaries, the barangays should volunteer their services to oversee if indeed there are violations that would lead to the disruption of our peace and order are being done, Madam Chair. So, inilang, aside from the police, aside from the barangay, there are other facets of security management that are being overlooked, just like, namang gay mga minors itong involved. Nine were involved, total, according to the report, five were victims, one died. And, marabaga, I, it is my, marabaga, ako ng na, naanda na, Madam Chair, nga, at least four times a week, in the use of my oversight functions, I go around the city to look into where. As a man gudam, pwede mahitabu ka na yon, Ani. We have just conducted our identification of areas that are prone to crimes where minors are getting involved. And the police were able to identify this. I see the police also patrolling. Sometimes, they stay ditto sa Makasandig-Balulang Bridge, ditto sa Taguanaw Bridge, na ay mga patrol cars that are there, roving, patrolling. Pero, na, namang gay mga badlungon gehapon nga mga, mga tao, no? Especially the members of the youth nga, dagid maginom. And, siguro, apilponis sa atong family concerns, no? Kitang mga ginikanan, magita, sabta sa atong mga anak. And I enjoy, of course, other committees to join in sharing their respective roles in having an upkeep of our security, Madam Chair. Dili lang police, dili lang ang mga barangay. Kay, apilpon mga ginikanan, magitapon sa ilang mga anak. And I'm talking about probably thoughts about family welfare. Magita ta sa atong mga suon, atong mga anak, nakawgawala dia. I'm sure these children who were involved in this fracas, their parents know that they're out of their respective homes and they're there. One was even from Cabite, katung babae, and one of the victims. And I don't know if the parents know that she's there. So, parents should be also responsible. As I've said, Madam Chair, security is not just the responsibility, responsibility of the police, not only the responsibility of the barangay officials, but it should be a shared responsibility, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Romeo Caliso. Yes, that is true. Families should be involved in the safety of their children. Pangitaon ni ni kagabi, asan ang mga anak, manglaag, papauli. You know, something, anything can happen, anytime, anywhere. So, thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Ian McNichol. Let us proceed.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, and to our colleagues. On the first item, we have proposed Resolution Number 2022-104, confirming the appointment of Engineer Hineto M. Acequia, City Engineer 2, with all rights and privileges appurtenent there too. And with the kind, is Engineer Acequia present? Okay. With the kind indulgence of the members of the council, move to suspend the rules to allow Engineer Acequia to appear before us.
Any second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Engineer, kindly use the podium next to Counselor EB. What do you have to say to address the Presiding Officer?
Yeah, Engineer Acequia, you have the floor and welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Mayor Joseline Bebop Rodriguez, and all the members of the 28 City Council, and other guests. Mayong Hapon, sa tanan. My name is Gineto Madridano Acequia. It is one year, one year ago today, I was designated as concurrent acting city engineer in addition to my appointment as, as my job as the city building official. I was made a replacement to the then-retiring engineer Rolando Pacuribot, who was the regular city engineer, and he has to retire because he reached the 65 year age. So, I have been in government service since 1928. My first service was as a utility man under the then-mayor Concordio deal. Then, it was during my second year in college and after I graduated, I went back to apply at the city engineering office. I was then appointed as building inspection assistant. And then, I rose from the rank. I was designated acting assistant building official in 1996. And in 19, in 2008, I went out of government service to join a private company. I was involved in the making of the Langindingan Airport. And then, in 2020, I was again, I was called up by then-mayor Oscar Moreno, and he offered me the job as replacement of the city building official who died in an accident. So, from 2020 up to 20, up to present, the, I was the appointed city building official. So, I am very glad that I was invited back to the city government because it was also my dream when I started working as a young engineer, to be working with the city government of Kageyan de Oro. So, I think I would stop at that, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Engineer Acequia, and yes, Counselor Bernie Sparta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quick, Engineer Mayong Hapon, I will just grab this opportunity, kay, one of our committee hearings, Mr. Chair, with John Michael, Honorable John Michael Seno, one of your representatives sir said na, more down lisod do kayo mo maka, maka, si tawagan ikanan ko, na report, magtoan dayon kay, motor lagi daw inyong sakianan dia, sir, o gubaon lagi daw kayo inyong sakianan, sir. Is it true, engineer, kung ang inyo dong sakianan dia, motor lang or namang galing gubaon bagit? Or just in case, or at least this is also the right answer, na baka mga ayokaw, kay at then of the day, if we have a very good engineer, pero gamotor kaya then of the day, if we are a very good engineer, pero gamotor lang, sir, more than gehapon na, ato magampanan ang ato mga trabaho. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councillor.
Thank you very much, Kagawad Byrne.
Yes, yes, you recognize.
Actually, the coming budget deliberations, we have proposed three vehicles for the three divisions already. And yes, we have motorcycles, Kagawad, but we are using it judiciously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Engineer Asakeya. Congratulations and more power.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Let us proceed, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya.
This is just a transfer from one department to another. So, maybe we can continue with item two then I'll return back to having a formal proceeding, Madam Presiding Officer. So, may we ask Engineer Anisito Banyas to address the body, you being the appointee of the city mayor as the replacement of Engineer Asakeya in the City Equipment Depot.
Okay, Engineer Anisito Banyas, you are recognized. Welcome.
Rose from the rank, Gabon. Mayong Hapon, Madam Chair. Mayong Hapon, mga Kagawad. Sa mga gehapon sa kang Engineer Asakeya, naggumikan gehapon ako sa ranks. As I started as Motor Pool Supervisor I, that was 1998, and only this last year, only this year, I was given a chance to lead the City Equipment Depot because of the retirement of Engineer Palamini. And for the past 24 years, I've been serving the City Equipment Depot. And for the last, for the remaining years before I retire in the government service, I fully commit my services and my life in serving the people of Cagayan de Oro for the, to the best of my knowledge and capability. Thank you, Kayo, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Engineer Banyas. Welcome and congratulations. More power.
Salamat, Kayo. Thank you.
Inspiring story, ba? Ang duha. Yeah. From ranks, ha?
Salamat, Kayo. Salamat, Kayo.
Thank you. Anyway, I move Madam Presiding Officer to lift the suspension of the rules.
Suspension is lifted.
For item number one, Madam Presiding Officer, I move to approve the confirmation of Engineer Hinito M. Asakeya as the City Engineer II of the city of Cagayan de Oro.
Any second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
For, move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
For item number two on proposed Resolution Number 2022-105, I move to confirm the appointment of Engineer Anisito V. Banyas as the City Government Department Head II of the City Equipment Depot with all rights and privileges appurtenent there too. Move for its approval.
Any second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Again, congratulations to Engineer Asakeya and Engineer Banyas.
Congratulations.
We now go to proceed to item number three, Proposed Resolution Number 2022-106, Returning to the barangay council, barangay number 39, the city's ordinance number 02-2022, series of 2022, covering its supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2022 with an estimated income of 462,058,000 pesos and 58 centavos with information that said ordinance is operative in its entirety. Move for, may we ask the Chair to recognize Councillor Ian Lam Lim.
Councillor Ian Lam Lim, you are recognized.
Mrs. Chair Mayong Hapon, everything is in order. I move for the approval of proposed Resolution Number 2022-106.
A second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
We have items four, five, and six having the same subject matter for omnibus motion. Four, proposed Resolution Number 2022-107, Returning to the Sanggoyan Kapatanong barangay number five, the city's resolution number 2022-03-1, series of 2022. Five, proposed Resolution Number 2022-108, Returning to the Sanggoyan Kapatanong barangay Mambuaya, the city's resolution number four, series of 2022. And six, proposed Resolution Number 2022-109, Returning to the Sanggoyan Kapatanong barangay Bayabas, the city, its resolution number 26, series of 2022, covering the respective annual budgets for calendar year 2022 with estimated incomes with the information that said resolutions are operative in their entirety. May we ask the Chair to recognize the SK President, Councillor John Michael Seno.
Councillor John Michael Seno, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer, Honorable Jocelyn Bebott Bautista Rodriguez and of course, Majority Floor Leader and the members of the 28th City Council, friends from the media and fellow Cagayanans, Mayong Hapon, ganatun tanan. I, considering that it is gone through the local finance committee, I so moved the Resolution Number 2022-107, Resolution Number 2022-108, and Resolution Number 2022-109, so move, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second, any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number seven and A, A and B, as omnibus motion, proposed ordinance number 2022-42, authorizing the honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uwi to apply for land reclamation expansion covering the coastal waters of barangay Lapasan, Gusa, and Kugman, actually, all the coastal roads, Madam Presiding Officer, subject to styling. All within the territorial jurisdiction of Cagayan de Oro City to be used for industrial, mixed commercial, residential economic zone, light manufacturing, food processing, and business processing outsourcing. Be proposed Resolution Number 2022-110, interposing no objection to the expansion for land reclamation covering the coastal waters of barangays again on the coastal roads of coastal areas of the territory. Or within the territorial jurisdiction of Cagayan de Oro City to be used for industrial, mixed commercial, and residential economic zone, light manufacturing, food processing, and business processing outsourcing. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby, ah, I'm sorry. Councillor Romeo Caliso, you are recognized.
Madam Chair, this is a good project. I'm not objecting to the proposal, but, Madam Chair, if you talk about reclamation, this is not a simple project to undertake because first, we've got to know the integrity on undertaking the reclamation. That's one. Second, Madam Chair, what is our, how do we visualize the outcome of the completion of the project after the reclamation and all the facilities, all the amenities, and all what we want done in that reclamation area look like? And so with this, it now requires all members of the council to take a look at the project study, every detail of it, because this is not, as I've said, a simple project, Madam Chair. And therefore, let me, let every member of this council be given the time to take a look at the details of this reclamation project. And I move that this be deferred for just a, just a considerable time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Roger Romeo Caliso. Yes, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya, you are recognized.
Before the action, Madam Presiding Officer, this is just an initial direction that we are trying to undertake as a legislative body. In fact, our city mayor has already gave the signal in his speech earlier this morning on his first 100 days that, one of which that he would like to undertake is a reclamation project. This is a long timeline, but we need to start at an initial stage, Madam Presiding Officer. Viewing the future is first, of course, is the the initial perspective of the dreamers, the aspirants with all our aspirations. All the things mentioned by Councillor Romeo Caliso, Madam Presiding Officer, will be taken care of by the feasibility study. This cannot be take, this cannot be considered by PRA, the Philippine Reclamation Authority, by NEDA, without the feasibility study. But the feasibility study cannot be done earlier than our intention. The intention should be first floated because whoever would undertake, because we cannot, as a city government, cannot produce billions of pesos to endeavor. We are doing this because we would like to float already the idea to the public that whoever would like to endeavor, propose to the city government, introduce either a solicited or unsolicited proposal through public-private partnership for the people measure. So, this is the first initial stage. In fact, in the previous administration under Mayor Oscar Moreno, there was already a discussion on the, on the reclamation, Madam Presiding Officer. In fact, I was authorized to go to Manila to check the requirements of the PRA. However, it went not appropriately considering the pandemic that happened. So, this is the first step according to the list of requirements of PRA. Again, former Mayor Oscar Moreno created the PPP Committee. Ah, no, no, that, the PPP. P4 Committee, not the four-piece committee. The P4 Committee under our ordinance, Councillor George Go-King knows about this because he is the principal author of the P4 ordinance. And I was also appointed by the city mayor then to play as a member of the P4 Committee. The people is the public-private partnership for the people ordinance. It's no longer PPP, it's P4. And one of the endeavors that we are, we were supposed to undertake is this. Because we can no longer invite investors to come to Cagayan de Oro utilizing our mountain tops resources for higher yields in revenues. Because we know for a fact, Madam Presiding Officer, that we, in the lowland areas of Cagayan de Oro are only limited. In fact, the record would show that pilara kaporsinto, 15, 20 percent ra ang lowland na'to. Mubito gitawag-taog ka na bitong, si tawag ana? Kanang panahon sa ba, taogon din taog ka ng inana?
What, a basin?
Basin, basin, catch basin. Because ang Cagayan de Oro gamayra, ang kasagara sa'to is bukid. Muna siya ang kulang na'to. Ang sa metropolization na'to, we cannot compete with the higher, with the modern cities with just limited resources. Mudagan pamili five, 10, 15 years. Pero ang importante, nag sugudta. Kaninga administration by the vice mayor, by the members of the city council. And I understand that mayor would like to create a reclamation council for this purpose and let him be. Kasi siya may tik execute. But on the part of the city council, and I have talked with Councillor Ed Cabanlas earlier before the session, he is agreeing with this proposal until certain discussions about this kay initial stage pa. Importante, di sugda na na'to, Madam Presiding Officer. I'm asking for reconsideration of the intention of Councillor Romeo Caliso. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya. Yes, Councillor George Go-King, you are recognized. Napamangka taan eh. 15 years from now.
Dagang salamat, Honorable Vice Mayor Jocelyn Bebott Rodriguez. In support of the pronouncement of our Majority Floor Leader, Karoon, October 13, we have the PCL Academy, the President's Academy in Ilocos Norte proposing on the PPP. One of main focus the president BBM, we have a lot to gain than to lose. Eh halos, nanay PPP Center Karoon, run by NEDA. They will be supporting us partnership with the different investors, but we need to have our ordinance, which was already approved. Of course, kabinduan ni Majority Floor Leader. I think that was on the 18th City Council. Na-approved na na siya. Atas pagodang atong investment incentive, kompleto na tas siya kuha sa ma requirement. So, I intend to bring our city to the Philippine Councilors' League. Atas'yo na'to ang PPP. Maunay number one nila Karoon, focus telling us na the best way to get investors is through PPP. Dagang salamat, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor George Go-King. Yes, Councillor Ian Atchas.
Hello, thank you, Madam Chair and to my colleagues. This is not an objection, Madam Chair. I would like to add something, Madam Chair, in the proposed ordinance number 2022-42. It says that to be used for industrial, mixed commercial, and residential economic zone, light manufacturing, food processing, and business processing outsourcing. Madam Chair, I would like only to add nga, unta, i-appel na to include na'to ang mga intended for public plaza. Kaya, there are barangay in the coastal area nga, wala agid sila recreation area. And I think kung naamangganning reclamation, I think mualokita intended po'd sa mga tao nga, gusto sad magpahangin sa bye-bye. And mga barangay po'd nga, nasad sila coastal plaza, Madam Chair. Ah, dalang ma't, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Ian Atchas. Okay, Councillor Roger Abadai, then followed by Councillor George Go-King, then Councillor Romeo Caliso.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. Actually, this is a good plan of the city government. Every year, the budgeta og land banking, palitong mga yuta for our development. But here, wala tay puna na ni, we are, wala hinaganita sa obang cities like Cebu, Metro Manila. You look at Metro Manila now, there, warag. There, warag mga libgos ang nubok ng mga commercial, industrial establishment. Cebu, mga reclaim na ilang, giga lang pirilah. So this the advantage, so Madam Chair, that is to maximize, kanang reclaim area, dosa to maximize this space for our city's development. Anyway, wag ipamanding process gapon from PRA under the supervision of the Office of the President. And we have so many requisites to undergone, Mr. George. So what is important is ato ng yun na nag lano nga, ato ng marreclaim ka ni mga areas and that area, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Roger Abadae. Yes, Councilor George Go King.
Dagang salamat, Madam Chair. Before the late Lorenzo Lim Kitkay, he offered to the city 20% share. Atong kapital lang yud is only our ordinance. 20% share of the total reclaim area. Tagaantana, tagaantana nila. So in answer to my colleague, Honorable Atchas, naata na so is up to the council, kigibalik man'to, it has to be approved by the City Council, the proposal kung saybatoon sa reclamation area. So tait yutonga ordinance sa Madam Chair, I hope nga with the help of our Majority Floor Leader nga, i-review na'to. O'to, okay, that was done in the 18th City Council. Ang PCL Manila is offering to help us to find investors. Atong kapital, ato lang yud nga, ordinancea. Dagang salamat, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor George Go King. Yes, Councilor Romeo Calizo.
Now, I understand that this is only the initial phase of the project, Madam Chair. That is our request from PRA that we be allowed to do the reclamation. Anyway, I'll just reiterate my questions during the presentation of this study. And with that, Madam Chair, I am retracting my initial manifestation to defer this proposal.
Thank you very much, Councilor Romeo Calizo.
Thank you, Councilor Calizo. The pending proposal is for the approval, Madam Presiding Officer, subject to styling.
Okay. Subject for styling, the one, the plaza? Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Kuhan naman ta modern, public spaces.
Oh, di na de plaza?
Really na plaza.
Usa naman de public spaces? Plaza pa bigya po ng bauan. Anyway, proceed.
Then, of course, coastal areas na'to. Para di li-limiting to kugman only. Kay naraba'y project sa Puerto.
Momotay ako ipakanta ganina sa kuwan, break the song.
Gusto ko mukanta ko. Councilor Agam, pakpakrabbi, wapoy kanta.
Okay, okay, proceed ka, Councilor Ian Nakaya.
So we only need the ruling of the Presiding Officer. The motion is for the approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby approved.
As amended, move to approve second final reading.
Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby approved.
So after this proposal, take note, this is not a measure that gave authority to a private company. This is the city government acting on its own to endeavor this project. And in the future, if there are beneficial proposals that would be entertained by the city.
Okay.
Inana, muna siya mahitabo, dili ni nga, yut nag atag-taog authority sa osaka privado. Number eight, Madam Presiding Officer, is proposed ordinance number 2022-43. Authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoi representing the City Government of Cagayan Duro to enter into one signed memorandum of agreement MOA with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, DNR, Region 10, to be represented by its Regional Executive Director, Dr. Henry A. Adornado, PhD, covering the party's collaboration in the establishment of the caves and cave resources conversion, management, and protection, specifically Makahambus Cave, Cagayan Duro City. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Roger Abadae?
Councilor Roger Abadae, you're recognized. Any objection, Councilor Roger Abadae?
Considering that the proposed ordinance number 2022, it is in order, I move for the approval of this ordinance.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Di man taangay mo balak, kung may pending sa dini. Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number nine is proposed ordinance number 2022-44. Authorizing Honorable City Mayor your favorite, oh, Councilor. City Mayor Rolando Aoi representing the City Government of Cagayan Duro to enter into one signed the contract of affiliation with the professional World Academy. Misamis to be represented by its Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Alfredo T. Limbago MBA, covering the six-month health care services course internship training of the latter's students at the JR Borja General Hospital under the terms and conditions stipulated herein. We will ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Maria Lourdes Gáñez.
Councilor Maria Lourdes Gáñez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion to approve proposed ordinance number 2022-44.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number 10 is proposed ordinance number 2022-45. Authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoi representing the City Government of Cagayan Duro to enter into into and sign the memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Philippine Business for Education Incorporated, to be represented by its Executive Director, Ms. Lovleen B. Basilote, covering the implementation of the Youth Works PH Project in the city of Cagayan Duro under the terms and conditions stipulated herein. We will ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Jan Michael Seno.
Councilor Jan Michael Seno, you're recognized.
Considering this ordinance is in order, Madam Presiding Officer, I so move the, for the approval of ordinance number 2022-45.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
11 is a proposed ordinance number 2022-46 appropriating the sum of 15,913 pesos from the item Personal Services Salary Savings under item number 326 Security Guard 1 for the period January 1 to February 4, 2022 in the 2022 annual budget of the JR Borja General Hospital, the city, to be made available for the payment of the unclaimed year-end benefits for calendar year 2015 of Mr. Rolando V. Borias, former administrative aide 3 Driver 1 of said hospital, who was separated from public service last September 13, 2018. Again, for the recognition of Councilor Maria Lourdes Gáñez.
Councilor Maria Lourdes Gáñez, you're recognized.
Motion to approve proposed ordinance number 2022-46.
Second.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number 12 is proposed ordinance number 2022-47. Granting relief to the delinquent real property and business taxes, stoleholders in public markets and terminals, and violators of traffic rules and regulations in the form of condemnation of their interests, surcharges, penalties, and or arriages, as the case may be in the manner provided for herein, providing guidelines in availing thereof and for other purposes. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councilor George Go King.
Councilor George Go King, you're recognized.
Dagang salamat, Majority Floor. Madam Chair, I move to approve the proposed ordinance number 2022-47 as harmonized by our Chairman on Laws and Rules.
Any second? Objection? Information, Councilor Attorney Chief Judith, followed by Councilor Attorney Joey Abu.
Madam Chair, kini ako dili maniingon nga, paksupa gusto lang ako tataon kaysa dua ka higayon, dua ka session nga, atong gi himo or gitigayon sa Committee on Ways and Means. Ang atong natuki kabahin man atong RPT o sa business tax. Gusto lang ako masairan, kenaaman din na kabutang karoon sa proposed ordinance number 2022-47. Ang katong nakasupak sa atong balao trapiko. Gusto lang ako umasairan kung pilabatong gaesgutan anik, wala man ko din na'to, Majority Floor Leader, maninatuki na'to sa katong Committee on Ways and Means.
Malang.
Thank you. If we recall in the last discussion, we were distributed with a cap, a copy furnished to us by the Office of the City Mayor. The other version, as if I may call it. And there was a proposal as regards the public markets and and traffic rules violators, the penalties, condemnation. And if we recall, and the record will bear me out also, Madam Presiding Officer, that I place emotion to include also that the matter be referred to the Committee on Laws and Rules for rationalization and styling for whatever necessary that we should have as a legislative proposal before this plenary. And with consultation with Councilor Yan Lam Lin, Councilor Romeo Calizo, they agreed as the Chair of the Committees on Barangay Affairs and Rule Traffic that they yield and accept the proposal of the City Mayor to remove all the penalties and start anew, fresh, for all the traffic management.
Yes, Councilor Attorney James Judith, yes?
Continuation na malanggali nga tong buhaton, gusto ko na lang pod na'ko nga, ang ako paling gusto mo may tabo, laslasan na langid pod na'to ang basic nga, atong gaipataong nga sa atong mga motorista nga nakasupak sa tong balao trapiko. Gusto lang ako idugang, Majority Floor.
To reduce the penalty.
Yes, dili lang sa katong pagcondon. Ako gustugin ako laslasan yud ang katong multa.
So that would be another ordinance?
Another ordinance, that's another.
Okay, we have to tackle that in the next.
Ay, yes, sir, pero muna ang ako.
Yes, okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Actually, that was pending in the Committee of Councilor Calizo. There were several discussions in the previous administration and the present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Councilor Attorney Joey Abu, yes, you're recognized, then Councilor Romeo Calizo.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Just a query on this proposal. I am present. I was present during the Committee on the, ah, he, Committee on Ways and Means Hearing last week, Thursday and Friday. And may I just say that the intention of this proposed ordinance is laudable. Or angay pod tagaan sa pasidungog, kung suporta, kay obviously, we all know that this ordinance will help. Makatabang yud sa tong katauhan, patipod sa ato ang mga negosyante. But let it be put on record, Madam Chair, that I am in support of this proposed ordinance. However, on the other hand, as the legislative body of the local government unit, it is our collective duty to ensure that all ordinances passed before this plenary should be in compliance with existing national laws. Now, I'd just like to raise a query. In fact, during the committee hearing, I have already raised this question. But if I'm not wrong, nobody gave me the answer on this. With respect to the proposed condemnation or reduction of real property and interest, if the good secretary can please show the provision under the local tax code of the city? Local tax code, na boss? Okay. That's actually the provision under the local government code. If you read it, okay, that is, this is the provision. Muna siya ang provision na naasa tong local tax code. Anagbutang din na that if you try to read it, wholly party taxes and interest their own for this succeeding year or years in the city affected by the calamity. This is the same provision copied from the local government code, section 276. If you try to interpret this, the application for the reduction and condemnation of real property taxes and interest should be in the application of perspective. Meaning to say, lantao ta sa unahan. Dili tamulantao sa likod. Sa kunsa tong nilabay. Now, second, this proposed ordinance is for condemnation of interest penalties and surcharges of the past years. Now, if we condone this interest surcharge, because I understand that the principal amount taxable from the taxpayer is supposed to be paid as well. But ang kanila mga surcharges and taxes lugar. But if we condone this, my question is, how shall we treat those who have already religiously paid their taxes, including the surcharges, penalties, and interest? Same question with the business taxes. How do we treat those who have already, who are religiously paying their business tax and those who have already paid the penalties and surcharges? Are we not? Because I've heard, I will just not mention names. Last week, I had a conversation with this person. He said that supposedly, the condemnation of surcharges and interest and penalties supposed to be covers only 20 year, 2020 to 2022. But as said by that person, that we should not be discriminatory in granting condenations and reductions. Now, in this situation, are we not also violating the equal protection clause when we grant certain condemnation and reduction of interest, surcharges, and penalties to certain people? But we do not grant any relief to those who are paying, paying religiously and have already paid? Do we give them tax amnesty or tax, I'm sorry, tax credit in that case? And with respect also to the tax condemnation on traffic violators, how do we also treat those violators who have already paid? Or, on the other hand, cases were already filed in court? Kay kung ang tanaw na'to, ang penalty lang sa condemnation sa ato adere, minus minus siya. Pero kung musang at nagani, ang kaso sa korte, ang pinakamubok nga fine nga ginaimpo sa korte is 3,000. So these are questions that we also have to answer. And I hope that someone can make a clarification, not to me, but for those people who are, who cannot avail this condemnation because they have already paid their taxes. They were, they were subjected to penalties, surcharges, and interest. On our part, actually, in our family, we paid penalties and surcharges as well when my, my father and mother died. So dili man sa'ka, kanang gusto ko ma-appel ane, but just a question, how do we cater these persons? How do we treat these people who already paid the penalties and surcharges imposed by the local government unit? And lastly, do we have data as to how much the city government would be? And lastly, do we have data as to how much the city government would be losing if we do not, or if we hope to overlook collection with these surcharges, interest, and penalties? But obviously, I understand that the principal tax is to be collected. But on the other hand, pilasad kaapod ang kwarta nga mawala po sa syudad if we try to condone this tax liability on the part of the taxpayers. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilor Attorney Joey Abu, yes. Councilor Ian McNakaya, you are recognized.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. They are also laudable in query by Attorney Councilor Joey. My protege. The future. One of, two of the bases, in fact, three of the bases contained and attached to the proposed measure, Madam Presiding Officer. On page, there is no page, okay, there is page, Appendix M, page 115. The first paragraph, and Appendix M, page 116. Before the section 76 LGC 1991, as read by Councilor Abu, there is section 447 LGC 1991 Powers, Duties, Functions, and Compensation. Paragraph A2, "To subject to the provisions of Book II of this code and applicable laws and upon majority vote of all members of this Anggunian Bayan in accordance living taxes, fees, and charges, prescribing the rates thereof for general and specific purposes and granting tax exemptions, incentives, or reliefs." What we have right now pending, Madam Presiding Officer, is relief. Relief, which is synonymous with amnesty. As defined, inscribed in DILG Opinion Number 31, Series of 2020, amnesty covers past tax liability. And we also go back to the same page, 116, section 192 LGC 1991, "Authority to Grant Tax Exemptions, Privileges, Local Government Units May Through Ordinances Duly Approved, Grant Tax Exemptions, Incentives, or Reliefs." Again, the term used is relief, "Under such terms and conditions as they may be necessary." Okay, I guess I have answered the first question. As to the good payer, Madam Presiding Officer, that's a difficult question. But there is a pending proposal, but we find it necessary to defer and refer to the Committee on Finance and perhaps the Ways and Means to study on the matter of giving incentives. It's not yet in our proposed ordinances, Madam Presiding Officer, because same question we raised before the Committee on Ways and Means as to how much would the city incur if we provide all these incentives? Pilay mawala sa ato syudad, mutong namutana ta, and the city treasurer has been asked with this question, and of course, she obliged and she committed to this city secretary, to this representation, to the Committee of Councilor Goxing, that she will comply and provide us with the specific numbers. Kay before we provide so much incentives, daw be, wala na inon ta ikaoperate. Ogsa pangutana, kung pilabay mawala, aktolin nawala na ni Madam Presiding Officer. I even challenged in one of the discussion in the previous council, why not declare it bad debts already? If it cannot be collected, declare it bad debts. But I do not know how things are done in the treasurer's office. They do not use the phrase bad debts. In the accounting parlance, there is a phrase, bad debts. And if it is a bad debt, it's uncollectible already. But however, dili man nila gabuhaton, so gusto nila ang support sa city council to condone, to provide relief. Muna siya ang tubaga, Madam Presiding Officer. So legally feasible ang diapo ng atong action. Kainasay principle og doctrine sa balao, nga kung ang action sa legislative body favorable sa tao mupre bail ginasya og suportado ginasya.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ian McNakaya. So what happens, Councilor? What happens now with the question of attorney, Councilor Attorney Joey Abu, those who were able to pay? nga nakabayad na, nakauna nagbayad, wala na sila ka bill sa mga penalties or surcharges, so what happens? Yes? Would you like to answer, Councilor Gurli Balaba?
I'll help the majority floor leader answer. If this is correct, it's already in Appendix M, page 110, line 64, letter D, "Thirty percent of the outstanding stall rentals for calendar years 2020 and 2021 of stall holders in public markets and terminals, provided that non-delinquent stall holders, stall holders ng, so market vendors ito may avail of the same relief, which will be applied in the form of tax credits." So i-credit siya.
Excuse me, Councilor Gurli, ah sa tong line, 110?
Page 110, line 64, letter D.
Thirty percent.
In the form of tax credits.
For the year 22 and 23? Okay, okay, I mix up. Okay, sige. Thank you, Councilor Gurli Balaba. Yes. Yes, Councilor Attorney Abu?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. The majority floor leader cited the attachments, the back of the agenda, citing section 447 of the local government code, which grants the tax exemption, incentives, and reliefs, has the power, local government units has the power to grant those. And he also mentioned the DILG Opinion Number 31, Series of 2020. I have this copy here, Madam Chair. Anyway, I've read this last week, and I am trying to read it now. There is only a portion of it, which was discussed and highlighted that tax amnesty covers past tax liability. That is correct. But first question, do local government units have the power to grant amnesty? In my personal opinion, they do not have. And in this legal opinion cited, attached in this agenda, the findings of the DILG Secretary Eduardo Anyo, he states, if I may be allowed to read it, Madam Chair, "In view of the foregoing, this department is of the considered view that tax condemnation of tax liability under section 276 of the local government code is equivalent to and is in the nature of tax exemption, as it covers future tax liability. As the condemnation is applicable to taxes and interest their own wholly or partially only for succeeding year or years." So it is prospective. Second to the last paragraph stated here, "In addition, this department concurs with the COA decision number 2019-401, which explained that the requirement set forth under section 276, such as the recommendation of the Local Disaster Coordinating Council, existence of calamity in area, and the condemnation covers those interest and penalties of unpaid real property of succeeding years and not of previous years." So this is very categorical in this legal opinion, that when we make a basis as to reduction and condemnation of real property taxes and interest, we cannot condone the past years. It is only prospective in application. So that's why I also, in the committee hearing, I also cited a an opinion of this, I forgot, journal, when it stated that the local government of Kalaukan City granting condemnation, it used the term amnesty, but basically, it was a condemnation of real property tax. In the retroactive application, it is said that it is not in compliance to section 276 of the local government code. So with this reference made here, ang kuwan namang god na dali sa kuwan kuwan, giquote lang, is this definition of tax amnesty og tax condemnation, tax exemption. But the gist of this legal opinion is that it stated that tax condemnation, tax amnesty, or tax exemption is in the nature, tax condemnation is in the nature of tax exemption, which should be applicable in the year or years, succeeding years, which means the application must be prospective. And in fact, the DILG concurred with the findings of the commission and audit when it held that the grant of the tax condemnation of this particular local government unit in the previous years is not valid. So I am just raising this because should we, should we, should we grant this, we might be again in contravention with the law. Everything I say here, Madam Chair, is just based on law. So, and with this reference in this agenda, it only talks about the DILG, the DILG Number 31, Series of 2022, made reference here in this agenda. It talks about the definition, but the entirety of the decision, the legal opinion of the DILG says otherwise or contrary. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Attorney Joey Abu. Yes, it is the pleasure of the body. Is that an objection? Is that an objection? Just comment? Uh, query? No objection? Let us be very specific, no?
Kay, I'd like to seek for enlightenment as well, Madam Chair. Because if I will vote for this particular part of the ordinance, I must be assured, and we must all be assured, like what I said, that as the legislative body of this, of the LGU, we must make sure that all ordinances passed by this body in the plenary must be inconsistent with the existing national laws. So, this was tackled before during the committee hearing, and I'd like to be convinced that we should have a basis, when should we grant this? But again, for the record, I am not interposing any objection on this. I just want that if ever we pass this ordinance, we should be in compliance with all existing laws. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Attorney Joey Abu. Councilor, can we have a five-minute recess? Councilor Ian McNakaya?
Okay.
Okay, so five-minute recess.
192.
Please go back to your seats. Please go back to your seats. Please settle. We're about to start. Okay? Okay. Session resume. So what is the pleasure of the body?
Councillor Joey is joining without doubt, Madam Presiding Officer. And I also asked him to read Section 8, page 112, Appendix M, page 112, line 206. 112.
112.
Section 8. 112. Para marilax ang tanan.
So 112, section?
Separability, if I may read.
Eight. Severability, okay.
"If for any reason, any part or provision of this ordinance shall be held unconstitutional or invalid, the other parts or provisions thereof which are not affected thereby shall continue to be in full force and effect." In other words, diba, Mr. Councillor Attorney?
Shall be in full force and effect, no? So katung provisions o ban, which should be in full force and effect.
All other, all other provisions with...
Yeah, meaning katung nakabayad na, the Attorney, Councillor Abou. Unsa man to, what happens now? Unyan napod, lain napod ng discussion.
No, what the Majority Floor Leader is trying to relate to the Presiding Officer is that should any of the provision under this proposed ordinance be declared unconstitutional or invalid, those provisions which could stand to be valid has still the force and effect of law. So katulang partikilar nga provision ang ma-invalidate.
Okay.
Kumbaga, but all, all, all other else shall remain to be valid.
Ah, okay.
If challenged.
Okay. Sige, let's proceed. Councillor, Majority Floor Leader, proceed.
Okay.
Everybody's waiting for this for a long, long time.
The pending motion is for the approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, second. Objection. Councillor Roger Abadai?
Wala, wala'y derby karun.
Okay, I hear none. Motion is hereby approved.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, and objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby approved.
For inclusion, Madam Presiding Officer, we have items 13 and 14. Mr. Secretary, no more. Move for their inclusion.
Okay. Second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
13 is proposed Resolution Number 2022-111, electing Councillor Jay Roa Pasqual and Councillor Aimi Rose P. Moreno as additional members of the Committee on Social Services, amending for the purpose Resolution Number 14200. 2022, the 20th City Council Committee Composition, Proponent Councillor Joy Lynn Mercedes Balaba. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councillor Balaba?
Councillor Gurli Balaba, you recognize? Yes, the Committee on Social Services gladly welcomes Councillors Jay Pasqual and Councillor Aimi Rose P. Moreno as new members of the committee.
Okay.
I move for the approval of Resolution Number 2022-111.
And a second.
Second.
And objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 14 is proposed Resolution Number 2022-112, declaring the month of October 2022 as the city's business month and the last week of October as Oro Chamber Business, Oro Best Expo Week on the city of Cagayan Dior. All members as the proponents. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
And a second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection. Wala, wala paningog. Second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
There being no other pending, move to adjourn.
Session adjourn.